is often first on our list. It's a high priority. We are continuing to proceed forward with the litigation against the quarry. The matter is set for trial on October 24th. We're going to go into closed session immediately following this meeting to discuss the status of trial preparation. Mayor Carr from McCook, where the quarry is located, has offered to try to broker some mediation. It's pretty late in the day for that, but we don't rule out anything. So we have a trial date. We're pushing forward. Depositions were done as recently as last Friday. And again, our chief litigator, Dan Stainer of Tavitt DeVito and Rothstein, will be joining us in closed session to update the board on progress in that regard. We've also, Rick Colby, Director Public Works, and myself, had conversations with the MWRD that went well discussing, you know, projects that may be available throughout the village and will continue to do that. We also meet with our regional elected leaders and will continue to do that. We continue to meet with the leaders from our neighboring suburbs in an attempt to work together because it is a regional problem and will continue to do all of that. I do expect that next meeting, we'll have something big to say, either start of a trial or a resolution somehow. So I'm excited about that. Moving on, tomorrow is, I guess tomorrow is the fire department's return to its annual Fire Prevention Open House. It's going to be from 6:00 to 9:00, obviously at the fire department located at 300 West Burlington. We're excited. Chief, can you give us some ideas of what we're going to be doing?
Well, besides being able to meet some really, really great firefighters, not me, but some others, we have two demo units. One is a residential sprinkler demo that we can do over and over again, but we do have a side-by-side sprinkler demo, one showing without a sprinkler system what, how the fire would progress, and one with a sprinkler system. And it's pretty, pretty dramatic if you've never seen one. So we're excited about that. And then different things that the fire department does, see the vehicles, he, and we have several of our partners coming from LTAC and police will be there and so they can see kind of who we work with. So it's pretty exciting.
Well, that's awesome, and I think everybody should come with the whole family, and I think there'll be some refreshments. So we'll call it dessert. Come on by for your dessert, bring the kids. And it's popcorn will be served. So there you go. Again, it's Fire Prevention Week, and we, this year, it's Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape. So please work with your whole family on planning an escape route if, God forbid, there is a fire in your house. Moving on, something not as scary, but Skeletober in La Grange and Halloween festivities. As many have seen, there's friendly life-size skeletons displayed around La Grange, dressed in theme to showcase participating businesses. We have Stephanie Posey, we have Nancy Cummings here from the LGBA. We appreciate you guys making our town look so festive, so thank you very much. With regard to Trick or Treat, everybody's been asking, we are having it on Monday, October 31st, from 3:00 to 7:00. After Halloween, please consider composting your pumpkins at the Pumpkin Smash 2022. Green your Halloween. It's going to be held on Saturday, November 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the La Grange Park, Department of Public Works, which is at 937 Barnesdale Road. That program was started and has continued to be sponsored by the La Grange Environmental Quality Commission and the La Grange Park Sustainability Commission. It's a great event. It's fun. It collects a lot, a lot of pumpkins that otherwise could find those ways into landfills and things like that. So it's a great way to get rid of your pumpkin. This is also National Pedestrian Safety Month. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration is launching National Pedestrian Safety Month with the goal of increasing awareness about pedestrian safety and reminding drivers and walkers that staying safe is a shared responsibility. As the end of daylight savings time approaches and the nights get longer, the risks for pedestrians increase. As a partner in the effort, the La Grange Police Department will continue with their social media outreach, posting reminders for motorists when approaching intersections, crosswalks, and passing bicyclists. Again, we ask all residents and visitors, be the change, travel safely in La Grange. And it is tough out there at night to see the pedestrians. It's difficult with the kids walking to school, so please be as careful as possible. There have been some accidents involving pedestrians. There was, again, last recently, the fatality in Western Springs, and it's everybody's job to be safe. I'm happy to say that Congressman Chewie Garcia will be hosting a town hall right here on La Grange at 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, October 26th. It's an opportunity for La Grange residents to make their thoughts known to their elected representative. We, of course, always lead when we have a chance to talk to Congressman Garcia with flooding. He's on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee in DC. He's a very powerful congressman, and we definitely use every opportunity we can to discuss the needs we have in La Grange. We're excited that he wants to hear from our residents, so please come out, ask your questions, and I'm sure you'll find it to be very informative. With that, I'd ask if Acting Manager Jones has a manager's report.
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. Our fall leaf pickup program began last week and continues through November 24th. Leaves will generally be collected every other week by the Public Works Department from each village street. Leaves should be raked to the curb. No bags or yard waste stickers are required for this service. For more information, please visit the village website or contact the Department of Public Works at 708-579-2328. We have two ongoing railroad crossing closures that I wanted to report on. The Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railway Crossing at Brainerd Avenue remains closed this week, and the BNSF advises that the closure is scheduled until 5:00 p.m. this Sunday, October 16th. The Indiana Harbor Belt Railway Shawmet Avenue Crossing is also currently closed, and that closure is scheduled until Sunday, October 30th. For more information, including detour maps, visit the village's website at la grangeil.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, I'd ask Clerk Celadino to read the items on the consent agenda, followed by the current business.
Matters on the consent agenda will be considered by a single motion and vote because they already have been considered fully by the board at a previous meeting or have been determined to be of a routine nature. Any member of the Board of Trustees may request that an item be moved from the consent agenda to current business for separate consideration. Item A, ordinance, design review permit number 118, 30 South La Grange Road, brick and mortar and five-and-dime local market. Item B, material purchase, Public Works Fiscal Year 2022-23 Tree Planning Program, and resolution, Public Works Suburban Tree Consortium. Item C, contract, 2022 Sewer Televising Program. Item D, minutes of the Village of La Grange Board of Trustees' regular meeting, Monday, September 26, 2022. Item E, Consolidated Voucher 221010. Current business, this agenda item includes considerations of matters being presented to the Board of Trustees for action. Item A, ordinance, variation, prohibited fence locations, Richard Reed, 10 Kelly View Drive. Item B, Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And item C, Contract Leaf Disposal Services Agreement.
Thank you, Clerk Celadino. At this time, I would invite anybody who has any questions, concerns on matters that are on tonight's agenda to please come to the podium and the microphone. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the matters on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, trustees. Any questions before I ask Clerk Celadino for a vote? Trustee Augustine?
Thank you, President Kukler. Just as previously stated, I'd like to recuse myself from voting on any agenda items related to the village prosecutor.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, Clerk Celadino, if you would do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Kateneck?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee McGee is absent.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously. I was distracted earlier. I should have said that Trustee McGee contacted me today, and she was feeling ill, so she's unable to attend tonight's meeting, and we wish her well. Moving on to current business, item A is the ordinance variation of prohibited fence locations, Richard Reed, 10 Kelly View Drive. And Trustee Kateneck, I think you're going to lead us on that.
I will. Thanks, Mr. President. So the petitioner, Richard Reed, is the owner of a property at 10 Kelly View Drive and has applied for a variation to construct a six-foot-tall vinyl privacy fence between the front building line and the house and the front lot line. The zoning code allows for variations for fence height and/or placement. On September 15th of this year, the ZBA Zoning Board of Appeals held a public hearing on the application. At that hearing, the petitioner discussed the unique orientation of the house and the atypical shape of the lot. The petitioner also stated that although the zoning code defines the lot line along South Brainerd Avenue as the front lot line, functionality of the house faces north and is accessed through a private drive on the north side of the property. The petitioner noted, due to the orientation of the house, the South Brainerd Avenue frontage is more akin to a corner side yard rather than a front yard. The petitioner also discussed his desire to buffer and screen the property from the nearby four-lane road, which is 55th Street. The ZBA found that the shape of the lot, orientation of the house, and the access via private drive together are a unique hardship that impacts the placement of a fence. The ZBA also found that the adjacent 30-foot parkway was also a unique physical condition. Excuse me. The ZBA appealed. The ZBA finds the hardship is not self-created, and after a closed hearing, the ZBA deliberated and voted unanimously five to nothing to recommend the approval of the requested variation. At this time, I would like to make a motion to support the ZBA's unanimous vote to approve the ordinance and authorize the requested variance for the property owner, Richard Reed, at 10 Kelly View Drive.
Thank you, Trustee Kateneck, and a second on that motion?
One second.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. Please, any questions? Seeing none, if we can get a roll call vote on that.
Trustee Augustine?
Aye.
Trustee Peterson?
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien?
Aye.
Trustee Gale?
Aye.
Trustee Kateneck?
Aye.
Trustee McGee is absent.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's going to be referred to Trustee Lou Gal. We have with us Lou Sabroni, our Finance Director, Joe Minuza, our Assistant Finance Director, who does a lot of the work for our financial reporting. We also have Dan Berg from Sikic Accounting Firm that makes sure that everything we do is on the up and up, and I'm happy to report that he gave us a clean report. So that's fantastic news, and now I'll pass it to Trustee Gale to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you said, tonight, we will discuss our annual comprehensive financial report of the village for the fiscal year May 1st, 2021, to April 30th, 2022, as prepared by the Finance Department and reviewed by our auditors, Sikic. Sikic has rendered a clean opinion for the Village of La Grange, stating that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, financial position of the village, and results of its operations as of April 30th, 2022. We've got in our packet and available to the public is the auditor's communication to the village board, which includes the following documents. There's a required communication, which is a letter from the auditors dated September 22nd, 2022, which is the last day of their fieldwork, reflecting the end of the audit engagement regarding certain professional auditing standards requiring specific matters to be communicated to the village board. Those include no new accounting policies were adopted, the application of existing policies was not changed, all material accounting estimates were reasonable, misstatements, and these are year-end adjusting journal entries, were corrected, there were no difficulties or disagreements with management during the course of the audit, and the limited audit scope related to the required supplementary information, RSI section, within the report. One of the other documents is a management letter. It's the auditing standards, which contains the auditing standards also require communication to the village board regarding certain matters that are opportunities for strengthening internal controls and operational efficiencies. The Fiscal Year 21-22 Management Letter reports there were no findings of material weakness involving the village's internal control. The Management Letter also identified several upcoming pronouncements which will need to be implemented in subsequent reports. And then there's also the annual comprehensive financial report. The clean opinion from Sikic also reflects that the village's financial statements are prepared and presented in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. The financial statements present two kinds of statements, government-wide and individual funds, each with a different view of the village's finances. The government-wide financial statements are designed to, or excuse, yeah, are designed to be corporate-like in that all village activities are consolidated into a total primary government entity utilizing the full accrual method of accounting. Individual fund statements, which use the modified accrual method of accounting, are presented to ensure and demonstrate compliance with finance-related legal requirements and budgetary compliance. Included in the annual comprehensive financial report is the management's discussion and analysis, which is designed to focus on the current year's activities and resulting changes. So then the Fiscal Year 2021-2022 summary. Since March 2020, the COVID pandemic has impacted practically every facet of life across the nation, including in La Grange. In an effort to maintain essential services to residents, the village did not impose any immediate changes to operations or staffing, specifically in public safety and public works, as residents' health and well-being remained a priority. As we transitioned to a more normal operating environment, the village, in conjunction with the LGBA, continues to attempt to minimize the impact of the pandemic on the local economy through marketing, advertising, advertising and business retention recruitment efforts. The village's general fund incurred a surplus of approximately 2.3 million in the fiscal year 21-22. Surplus was primarily due to higher-than-anticipated increases in sales tax and state shared revenues. The increased sales tax is primarily a result of the leveling the playing field for Illinois Retail Act, which became effective January 1st, 2021, and the increase in state shared revenues is due to increases in all components of individual and corporate income taxes, the rebounding of the Illinois labor market, and an increase in La Grange's population. Significant offsetting, significantly offsetting the increase in revenue was a decrease in salaries and benefits due to several public safety vacancies and the delayed timing of two community development projects, the gateway signage and the building permit software. The general fund's reserve balance at fiscal year end is 13.1 million, or 77.9% of annual operating expenditures, which is slightly above the maximum targeted reserve range. As capital improvements continue to remain a strategic priority for our village board, as well as the focus of feedback from concerned residents, the village did not defer planned capital improvements in the fiscal year 21-22. During the summer of '21, the village completed the resurfacing of sections of Elm, Goodman, and Maple Avenues between Brainerd and Gilbert. The village also continues to seek reimbursement and financial assistance from federal and state government sources, ARPA, CARES, FEMA, et cetera, related programs for various infrastructure projects, including sewer improvements. The COVID pandemic did have a significant impact on the village's parking fund, which incurred a deficit in fiscal year 21-22 for the second consecutive year. The decrease in the number of commuters also significantly impacted our enforcement's efforts, and the lack of commuters within the central business district has diminished the volume of ticketed activity. Although the parking fund has a small reserve balance, which is utilized to fund lot replacement and maintenance, the deficit significantly reduced the balance reserve. In order to restore parking fund reserves to their previous pre-COVID balance, general fund reserves were utilized to fund an additional operating transfer to the parking fund in 21-22. Looking ahead, it may be necessary to continue to use general reserve funds to sustain the parking fund operations in subsequent fiscal years, depending on if and when commuters return. Alternatively, the village may need to consider other funding options to sustain maintenance of the parking facilities if the reduced parking demand continues in the future. A parking study is currently ongoing during fiscal year 22-23. It should be noted, however, that because the village has identified our reserve balances as contingency funding or identified future sewer improvement projects, the use of reserves are recommended to be considered only if necessary. Mr. Dan Berg, a partner with Sikic, is here and tonight, and will be presenting a brief overview of the audit report and to answer any questions we may have. At the conclusion of our discussion, it would be appropriate for President Kukler to accept on behalf of the village board the report, and no further action by us is necessary. Once we have the report, the village staff will submit it to the Government Finance Officers' Association for consideration of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the village. The village has received this prestigious award for 26 consecutive years. Additional copies of the report were placed on file at the La Grange Public Library, in the village clerk's office, and in the Finance Department for Public Inspection before this board meeting. The Fiscal Year 21-22 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report was also posted on our website last Friday, October 7th. So with that, please let me introduce Mr. Berg to give us further details. Take it away, Mr. Berg.
It's kind of rare in Illinois to do that, and so special kudos to Joe and Lou for accomplishing that. And again, as, as Trustee Gale said, it's a clean opinion. We call it unmodified. It's the best opinion we're allowed to give. It's the opinion that the village has become accustomed to receiving. And it is a comprehensive report, meaning it has an introductory and a statistical section. You're used to that, but a lot of clients do not do that. A lot of municipalities do not do that. It gives you and the users a lot more information. I would encourage you to take a gander through the stats section. If you haven't gotten a chance to read it or you're intimidated because it's just too long, please focus on the MDNA and the transmit letter. MDNA compares last year to this year, gives you a nice synopsis of why things change from one year to the last year to this year. And then lastly, I wanted to point out that the auditor's communication to the board is exceptionally thin, but then it's good. The thinner it is, the fewer findings we had, the fewer adjusting journal entries that we're recording, and fewer issues that we had. So this is about as thin as it gets. So congratulations to the village and the staff for that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions again about the process or the documents you have before you.
Trustee Kateneck?
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Berg, for the update. I know I usually have quite a few questions, but I think, as you mentioned, things seem to be running smooth. So just in terms of findings, any carryovers from last year, or were last year's findings corrected and adjusted, and these are new findings, then, I assume?
From the prior year, we didn't have anything new this year, and the prior year findings were.
Right.
The biggest issue will be going forward, the new accounting pronouncements on leases and software. We all have the full understanding.
Thank you for those comments, and then obviously, Joe and Lou, thanks for the diligence and oversight on the presentation of financials. Your track record obviously speaks for itself, and the residents of La Grange should be very proud of the work that you guys are doing, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Trustee Kateneck. Trustee Gale?
Thank you, Mr. President. No, no questions. I just wanted to add the compliments to Joe and Lou as well. I feel like this, this award we get, you know, every year, almost like our financial staff is now like pitching a perfect game, and like we're all the players, and we got to make sure if the ball gets into us, we don't drop it. So I'm, you know, I'm hoping that streak will continue, but just again, congratulations. Thanks for, you know, thanks for all your work and, you know, making this a relatively easy process.
Thank you, Trustee Gale. Trustee Augustine?
Thank you, President Kukler. How do you keep it fresh? You've been looking at our budgets for a few years. We've obviously been doing the right things for a long time. Do you switch up the evaluation, use different folks, read it backwards to make sure you're not just too comfortable with it? You know, how do, how do we make sure we're, we're getting fresh eyes and a deep look?
Indeed, our senior, I've been on the audit for several years now, and so has the senior manager, not as long as I have, Gina DePudo, sorry, came, went back to her maiden name. But we do rotate incharges and staff, not quite on an annual basis, on the incharge level, but it has worked out that way the last three years. So the style of testing, I, I direct what gets tested, and I try to change that up a little bit every year. I mean, obviously, staff knows we're going to test cash, investments, and payables, and debt, things of that nature, but the methodology and other accounts that we test, especially in the revenues and expenditure sections, vary dramatically one year to the next based on amount of capital outlay, things of that nature, or any events that occur within the village that require more resources to be expended. But having a little bit of rotation within the staff helps that, and then always being cognizant of new pronouncements and the idea that some parts of the audition will be a surprise to staff keeps us kind of on our toes, and hopefully we can bill the judge the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Seeing no other comments or questions, I, Dan, thank you for coming out again. Thank you to your team for their hard work. I do want to say for the people listening at home, again, we are doing the parking study as we go. That is a fund that obviously the commuters haven't been like they were pre-COVID, so we're monitoring that, and we'll make adjustments as necessary. So thanks for your hard work and the team. And I'll officially accept the report as presented. Moving on, we have the Leaf Disposal Service Agreement that's going to be referred to Trustee O'Brien. Trustee, I think we have to wait a pause for a second. Trustee Augustine is, are you going to say anything? She's going to say something.
Well, I'm going to say that I have two brothers. My older brother, as the reason I recuse myself every meeting, he's our village, long-serving village prosecutor, and I have a younger brother who is involved in the next item that this board will be discussing, so I will to be extra cautious. I will recuse myself from vote, the vote or the discussion, and I will leave the room while it's happening.
And Trustee O'Brien?
The Fiscal Year 22-23 Public Works-
The fiscal year 2223 Public Works Department budget includes $58,500 for leaf hauling and disposal. Each fall, the Public Works Department collects leaves from village streets. Public Works then typically loads the leaves into vehicles owned by a third-party vendor, who in turn hauls the leaves to a composting site. Leaf removal service is free of charge to village residents. Rainbow Farms Enterprises Incorporated has performed leaf hauling services for the past six years. For the past two years, they were the only vendor capable and interested in performing this work. On September 11, 2022, Rainbow Farms notified their long-term customers that they have reduced their trucking services and no longer intend to provide leaf hauling services. On September 30, 2022, Rainbow Farms indicated that they will be closing their business after 30 years in operation. We solicited competitive proposals from other vendors and contacted other public works departments to find other leaf haulers. We also evaluated alternate collection and disposal methods. The following table reflects the quotes received. Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC quoted $55 per ton at an estimated cost of $88,000. Utility Transport Services in Markham quoted $57.50 per cubic yard for a total cost of $460,000. Rainbow Farms provided no bid. Flood Brothers, no bid. RR Landscape Supply, no bid. And Homer Tree Care, no bid. Two quotes were received. The quote from Utility Transport proposed a leaf hauling service similar to the village's current practice. The quote from Lake Shore Recycling Systems, excuse me, reflects the cost for receipt of materials only, no hauling is included. Based on historic trends, approximately 8,000 cubic yards of leaves annually, Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC provided the low quote. The best available option for this season is for Public Works staff to transport our leaves to Lake Shore Recycling Systems in Forestview, Illinois, approximately six miles from LaGrange. Lake Shore Recycling will then haul the leaves to an organic partner for composting. Final cost will be based on the actual tonnage of material deposited, with tear weights on the vehicle of the before and after drop-off. Based on historic trends, the cost is estimated to be $88,000. Transporting the leaves is a practice the village employed in the past until contracted leaf hauling became more economical. The hauling practice generally occurs in the evening hours, excuse me, evening hours, and will intend to utilize overtime in order to accomplish this task. Public Works has available, has the available equipment and personnel. There will be no change in how the leaves are removed from the village streets. From the resident's perspective, the season will occur in the same manner as previous seasons. The following chart details the budget amount and actual expenses for the leaf hauling over the last several years. Fiscal year 1314, the budget was $40,000, actual $39,426. Fiscal year 1415, budget was $45,000, actual was $35,760. Fiscal year 1516, budget was $45,000, actual was $68,250. Fiscal year 1617, budget was $45,000, actual was $52,326. Fiscal year 1718, budget was $45,000, actual was $42,705. Fiscal year 1819, budget was $45,000, actual was $46,215. Fiscal year 1920, budget was $45,000, actual was $58,590. Fiscal year 2021, budget was $50,000, actual was $46,800. Fiscal year 2122, budget was $58,500, budget was $42, or actual was $42,700. Actual expenses vary each year, based on the selected contractor, volume of leaves, and price. At the end of the leaf hauling season, staff will reevaluate the leaf hauling, reevaluate the leaf hauling budget based on the quantity of leaves removed and total expenses. Staff will also evaluate the process and determine if any modifications can be made in future years to improve efficiency and reduce overall expenses. In summary, staff recommends the village board approve a service agreement with Lake Shore Recycling for the material recovery of leaves at a unit price of $50 per ton. Staff will prepare a budget amendment at fiscal year end to reflect any additional expenses, expense in excess of the budget at $58,500.
And then we need you to make a motion.
I will make a, sorry.
That's all right.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the leaf disposal services agreement with Lake Shore Recycling System.
Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. And a second. Thank you, Trustee Gale. Any questions, comments? Trustee Koteenek.
Thanks, Mr. President. Rick, just a quick question on, on the public work side. It seems like this is a, a line of business not too many people are interested in anymore. I think it's safe to say that from the bids or lack of bids that we received. What are some of our neighboring communities doing in this regard? I, you know, I recall in my time in Riverside, you know, we paid, paid through our annual waste removal, bagged it and put it on the curb, and it was taken care of. So, you know, to the extent that LaGrange seems to subsidize this service rate is a nice benefit, but just interested what maybe Western Springs, Hinsdale, any of the benchmarks do and how they handle this?
Yeah, absolutely. So that's exactly the kind of analysis we went into with the change in service and change of delivery. Different, different vendors have different configurations of their yards, which would, which is something to look into. One of the issues with, with certain types of proposal is based on the height of the truck that comes in, to have a certain-sized loader in order to get into that. There may be some opportunity to construct, to build. What some of our other partnering communities do, Brookfield, for example, uses their same waste hauler, actually configured a custom-built contraption, and they basically use their, their vehicles from Groot, and they load, and they basically pile, use their front, their Skidster to load into a contraption they built, and it loads it, and they haul it directly. Some of the considerations with that, that might be a slower pickup time, or throughput may be slower in that sort of model, so there might be a lower level of service and something to consider. And then, so I know Western Springs is hauling away, LaGrange Park has a taller lift, and they're able to load basically there and haul using Lake Shore Recycling. So we did, we did look at lots of different alternatives, and I think there's opportunities in the future.
Okay. Thanks for that detail.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I would ask Clerk Saladino to conduct a roll call vote.
Trustee Koteenek.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee McGee Ebsen.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Colby. At this time, I would ask if there's any public comments on matters not on tonight's agenda. And please come up to the podium.
There.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. So I was asked to.
You just, although we all know you, Becky, you have to introduce yourself for people at home.
Becky Lorenson from LaGrange. And I was asked to announce this. Our community diversity group tomorrow night is having a special occasion. We normally do uncomfortable conversations at 7:00 PM, and tomorrow night, we're going to be doing this video game, which is called the Aware to Act Ungame. So it's a video game where you land on certain squares, and then certain facts related to racial identity are revealed, and there is a discussion about those things. So I think many of us who grew up without a lot of contact with people of different nationalities and races are unaware of certain things, so this game is really meant to spark conversation and increase our knowledge. I have the information here. Anyone who's interested could take a screenshot, or you could email lagrangediversity@gmail.com, and we will get you a link to that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And Becky, I know you have a guest from Georgia, I believe, so we'd like to welcome him to LaGrange.
So Monterius has come up. He's another member of the Bahai Faith from Georgia, and he's come to our area to assist with some of our activities that we're having in this area. So we welcome him.
We do welcome you, and we appreciate your assistance. So thank you very much for coming. Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. Laura West from LaGrange. Everyone knows what street I live on, Sunset Avenue. Great to hear the fire. You learn a lot at these meetings, so I'm grateful that I've had a reason to join and look forward to participating in a lot that all of you are working very hard on. So I do appreciate that. The flooding is always discussed. It's never on the agenda. It's never voted on the agenda, anything other than the trial. I think something that we've done for a very long time is we've had trust that the village will take care of flooding issues, and we've been very patient, because we know it's a big, hard, difficult issue. Those are gone. The trust is gone, the patience is gone. We are working our best to try to bring attention to this issue, and it's not something that we have the luxury of time anymore. It has gotten worse, as we've discussed, and it needs to be addressed. There's a lot of things that are in our control, there's a lot of things that are out of our control. In our control, PermaSeal, overhead sewers, spending a ton of money in addition to the ton of money you spent on your house and on your taxes. Residents are doing that in droves. Servpro after flooding events, unfortunately. These companies are benefiting greatly from the lack of action on the village board level. Now, the village board has a lot of control, and I understand there's a lot of discussions. Everyone's working really, really hard. The residents interpret hard work as something on the agenda, something being approved, and ground being broken, and change is being made. That has not been seen or visible or felt by any of us. A lot of things are out of our control, the weather, climate change, the trial. My gosh, that was supposed to happen at the beginning of 2022. All these things are out of our control. What is in our control? Let's do something, let's find a solution, and let's make something happen, and the trust and patience are going to be gone until we can see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. West.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Gall. I live at 100 Sunset. Thank you for all of the hard work and the support that, the small support that we've seen on the flooding issues. When I was here two meetings ago, there was sort of some discussion, of course, not formally on the agenda, but some discussion that sort of the Mars project would be back, and we would discuss this, and there would be sort of more of a concrete plan, and appreciate all of the sort of pressing issues that you all are working on, and appreciate the advocacy from several of you. We are looking forward to more formal action. We pay so much in property taxes, and sitting here listening to sort of the budgeting and the planning, and where is sort of the capital outlay for these massive flooding issues that are literally impacting our daily lives? So I just implore the board to show some level of action. We're here almost every week pleading with you. So again, we appreciate the advocacy so far, but we need to see more action, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gall. And not seeing any other resident comments, I would open the floor to trustee comments. Trustee Augustine.
Thank you, President Kukler. And quickly, Joe and Lou, again, thanks. We're a very lucky village to have you guys keeping an eye on all the money that comes in and goes out. I'd also just like to make a statement that I had a, the largest, I felt the largest blast from Hanson Quarry today that I've ever felt in my 10-plus years of living in this town. And I do have a seismic graph that I asked to be put in the yard about a year ago, so I may follow up with, with you, Charity, afterwards to see how we go about getting the data that's been accumulated from my house that shakes daily. And also, thank you, Charity, for the great job you're doing as the acting village manager. It's, it's no small thing, and you're doing, you're juggling two jobs. We all are deeply appreciative. And to the residents who just spoke about flooding, we are on it. You will see. Okay? I know it's, doesn't help, but we are, we will be discussing these matters. You'll see them soon.
Thank you, Trustee Augustine. Any other comments? Seeing none, we are going into closed session, as I discussed earlier, and I need to make a formal statement. It is the intention of the village board to meet in closed session this evening under Section 2C1 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to discuss matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, Section 2C11 of the Open Meetings Act to discuss pending, probable, or imminent litigation, and under Section 2C21 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed. We will not be reconvening into open session, as no formal action will be taken during the closed session. I would ask for a motion to adjourn into closed session and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, trustees. Any discussion regarding going into closed session? Seeing none, I would ask for a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's why we have our lawyer up here to make sure that I don't make those mistakes, or when I do, I'm corrected, I should say. I'm going to move it to Clerk Saladino to do a roll call of them.
Trustee Augustine.
Aye.
Trustee Gale.
Aye.
Trustee Koteenek.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee O'Brien.
Aye.
Trustee McGee Ebsen.
And that passes unanimously. Can I assume we go now into closed session? All right. Perfect. Thank you. And then.